Linked to a live document that when it updates, we've already, we've already got it. But yeah, if you don't mind just checking that out. So, so before that eventuality may occur, we have it covered if we
Yeah.
Need to do anything different.
Mm hmm.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nobody else in attendance, public comment will be closed. We have no public hearings. That brings us to item seven, action items. The action item for tonight, motion to brief changes to planning commission bylaws. And I, well, I guess maybe first of all, we should introduce Fletcher as our new director of planning and zoning. And then I can, I can give a little background about how we got where we are. And there was something else that I did want to get fixed up on here. But if you want to introduce what's before us, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair. And good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Fletcher Ryer. I am the new director of planning and zoning with Dexter Township. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the residents and be before the board this evening. Today, we have before you a proposed amendment to the Dexter Township Planning Commission bylaws, specifically Article Six Meetings, Section F Forum. Looks like there was some concerns about what would happen in the event where both the Chair and Vice Chair were absent from a meeting, but a forum was still present. My suggested language in the bylaws adds some clarity to that potential situation and would require the commissioners to vote on a temporary chair in the event that both the Chair and the Vice Chair are absent.
Thank you. And when we had this discussion, this, this was an item that, you know, I thought, oh, golly, it's, you know, certainly possible. Like tonight, we could, we could conduct business with only four people. It's not beyond reason that the Chair and Vice Chair could both be missing. And we had no provisions for what do we do in that case? And it seems like the solution is simple enough as Fletcher just said. So the, the only thing I would like to add to this because it is, and maybe just reference to Article five A one, just to clarify, then ex officio member shall not be eligible to serve as acting Chair. And that's nothing against trustee Abbott. But, you know, should, should that time come and, oh, my gosh, we've got four or five people here. We have to elect a temporary Chair. It's going to be addressed here, but who's going to know that a couple of pages before that it said, yeah, okay, everybody can do that except for. So I would just like that either referenced or however you think is cleanest, we can just reference that or just pick up that language and plop it in here also. So when somebody is reading through, kind of cookbook on our way through, trying to figure out, oh, nuts, what do we do tonight? We just don't fumble that.
Well, you could just add a sentence as simple as per section subsection.
Yeah.
You know, how, whatever you call me, can, is prohibited from, you know, assuming the role of temporary Chair or Chair or Vice Chair.
Yeah, I think we can. Now, for purposes of passing this on, we should probably write that right now. And if that's the way.
Well, then it's in there, then it's in there twice, but you're not responsible, whoever's looking at that isn't responsible to go back and remember that.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Right. They should just be able to see that, that provision is that prohibition.
Mr. Chair, being, I guess, fill my role of the, the skunk at the garden party this evening. In the rare event that this would happen, I, I agree completely with the modification to the, the quorum requirements here as stated. However, if we were to end up in that hopefully very rare situation that both the planning commission Chair and Vice Chair were not present, what, who, who would conduct this meeting? And what I would propose is when we include this language in here, we also set in a, an additional chain of responsibility that if the Chair and the Vice Chair are both absent, that the meeting or the vote to elect a temporary Chair would devolve to the Secretary. And if she or he were not here for the purpose of the vote and the vote only, it would then devolve to the, the Board Representative. And if the Secretary and the Board Representative were not here, we wouldn't have a quorum. So the whole thing would be moot anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. And since that's a little more extensive, we don't have to sit here and try to wordsmith that. We can bring this back for one more touch. This is, you know, this is pretty simple. And, and actually, if I back up a little bit, it had been suggested that we had not reviewed these in a while. That's why it came here. And my only couple of inputs were that and this other thing I'll get into in a minute. The thing that's kind of funny slash embarrassing is as I was going through these almost like fresh eyes because I hadn't looked at it in a while, and I got to that, oh, that's weird. What, how come we never addressed that? Well, when I look back, the previous version of this, which is many years old, also didn't address it. So, so it wasn't like, I think what it really points to, and it kind of gets to, to your point. Uh, this is a very rare occurrence and generally, well, it hasn't happened in the past six years, at least that I can attest to. But generally, when we have situations where we know, you know, a couple of people are going to be gone, we'll just postpone the meeting, you know, we'll skip it, we'll move it. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not making out like this is a huge big deal. It just, when I was reading through this, it caught my eye that, you know, it seems like we ought to have a provision. The other thing I, I did want to do that, that I had mentioned, and this would be page 11, L five and 10, Order of Business and Agenda. Public comment, I would just like to remove non-agenda items. I, I think it's kind of clunky. I, I think the way this probably came about is, is if we have a public hearing, that's going to be open for public comment. But we could have agenda items that somebody would like to address us on that are on the agenda, but don't involve public hearing. And we clearly don't, we don't open up every item of business to, hey, anybody, anybody have anything to say to us? So unless anybody objects to that, I'd just like to remove that non-agenda items. And whoever the Chair is can, you know, help shepherd that if we had a packed room and it looked like it was going to be a little, a little long or disorderly. And we would like to hold that to the actual public hearing. But I, I think it's, it just kind of rubs me the wrong way if we put restrictions or kind of artificial restrictions on, hey, somebody wants to come say something to their public body. Have at it, talk about the weather. I, you know, that's not really my business. We're here to listen. So anyhow, unless anybody has any objections with that, let's just strike the, pardon parentheses on five and 10, and when this thing comes back to us, I think if, if anybody has, has any other comments tonight, this would be the time. If something strikes you between now and the next time this comes at us, I think cleanest thing would be send an email directly to Fletcher. Don't copy the rest of us so we don't inadvertently, you know, get in something that would appear to be like a round robin email discussion outside the view of the public. There's, you know, there's nothing burning on this that requires that we take final action on at this meeting, next meeting, the meeting after, so. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, yes. If you were, I agree with what you were saying, but if you look back on page 10, item K one, action items, in the discussion of action items there, it is mentioned that any public input or that will be relevant to what is being discussed at that moment by the commission will be done at that time.
Yeah, that's, that's okay for public hearings, but we don't actually do that either. I don't recall that we've ever, that we've ever opened a meeting like right now. Anybody want to talk to us about bylaws before we, because that is our only action item, action item. But non-agenda items is the way this thing is written. And I think we'll just get rid of that and anybody can talk, beginning of the meeting, end of the meeting, in addition to whatever public hearings may take place. You know what I'm saying? It's, but there's the presumption in here that, that we do open it up for public comment on action items. Maybe we ought to have a discussion about that because I don't have a recall.
Well, the way I read that a little differently than you do.
Okay.
Well, public comment on non-agenda items or items not listed as action items on the agenda shall be presented at the beginning and end of the meeting, which I think is what gave
Right.
To writing non-agenda items on items five and 10.
Yeah, and I'm saying that I don't think we ought to have that restriction, but that section you're referring to then implies, I don't guess it outright says it, that action items, we will ask for public input, public comment. And not saying we've never done it, but it's not, you know, it's not.
No, I was putting more emphasis on the non-agenda.
Yeah.
That statement, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting around the, wrapped around the shaft of something really middle.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between how we advertise it, you know, on, on the agenda versus how we conduct the meeting. You know, you know, you can conduct it the way you want, but and maybe I'm just getting a little carried away with it. It just rubs me the wrong way that, hey, you can, these two points, you can talk to us unless it's something that's on the agenda. Anyhow, that's all I had for, for that. But since that was an action item, if nobody has anything else to comment on, would be good for us to have a motion to do something with this. And that something seems most logically that staff takes these comments and brings the document back to us. I don't know that we want to specify at the next meeting because the next meeting, you know, might be busier than we want. But we want to handle this, but.
Mr. Chair, I move that this discussion of changing the appropriate paragraph, we'll get back to it in just a moment. Article, Article Six, Item, yes, Item C, where?
B, it should be, it should be F, I guess, Article Six.
Article Six F, uh, be given back to the Director of Planning and Zoning for wordsmithing, taking into, taking into account the comments of the planning commission members of this evening. And will be brought back in a timely fashion.
Excellent. Was there support for that?
Support.
Only delay is making sure that I get this right for the readback. So moved by Birch and supported by Abbott to refer this item back to Director of Planning and Zoning to incorporate comments of the planning commission members. But pretty much it. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Close, no. Motion carried. Brings us to discussion items, the first of which is the zoning ordinance amendments regarding non-conforming contiguous lots. And I think when we last left this topic at the February meeting, there was mainly some discussion we asked for clarification. Uh, somebody brought up the example of, I, I think it was a road in a platted subdivision. But anyhow, somehow where that road may not be owned by the property owners on each side of the road. And I don't know, you know, maybe it could be owned by the association. I don't know. But anyhow, uh, in that case, would that property be contiguous or not? I think you guys can take it away because I think you came up with the answer in those cases.
Um, and so the short answer is sometimes, but not usually, according to the assessor. Um, so there might be some cases where, uh, private property meets in the middle of the road where a private road went over it and it's an easement on both sides. But if it is a public road, he said those could not be combined. Um, so I don't think that directly answers your scenario that you were talking about, Mr. Chair.
In fact, that one confuses me a little bit more because even though there's a public road, the property owners own to what theoretically is the middle of that road. Now that, sometimes the roads don't end up where they're shown on the property lines. So I, that caveat, but yeah, you, you typically own to the middle of the road, uh, at least in
Anyway.
The more rural areas, I don't know about, take one of the new subdivisions, how that's handled.
Yeah. And so he said that if it was a public road, he can't combine the, the lots across the street from one another in this. But because they don't meet by meets and bounds like parcels that are contiguous to each other. So the non-contiguous parcels that are separated by a road of that nature, he can't combine. And that seemed to be the gist of what you were asking is could we make people across the road combine them? The answer is if they're side by side and they have their side lot is the dividing line, then yes, he can combine those because they touch and meets and bounds. But if in some cases, the road that divides them, they're, they, they don't touch. Um, and so then he cannot combine them.
Well, start with the premise that he undoubtedly knows a lot more about it than I do. I am still confused by the answer because that property does touch. I don't know about legal descriptions that you've got this section of land with a road going through it, that it's one description or it's two descriptions, but they do touch with the rights of the public as described wherever. But anyhow, that's not really the situation that we're concerned about. It's these others, and I would be much less familiar with that. So given that that's the, uh, the opinion that we got, where does that leave us on how we ought to go forward with this? Because this mainly was to address or clarify an issue that is easy to get tripped up on because it's complicated. There's, there's like a logic tree that goes with this.
Yes. So, um, there's a logic tree and you have two sets of amendments that are attached to my memo. One where it removes the non-contiguous lots from the exception. So it wouldn't treat that lot across the street that's in common ownership as, as a zoning lot. Um, so it's, it's one lot for the purposes of that. Because I think what you were concerned about was, is there some way that we can combine the parcels? So then after the house is built or the ADU or the accessory dwelling or the accessory structure is built, that we can just make it really clean and everybody knows that these are combined. So one of the questions was, could you do that across the street? And the answer from the assessor is likely not. And there might be some rare cases where you could, but in his opinion, not. And I'm not sure of all the technical details of it and whatnot, but that was the answer I got. And I think I forwarded that to, to you all. Then, um, so then it becomes the question back to you is do you want to keep the non-contiguous lots as part of this or not? And there are pros and cons to both. The, if you keep the non-contiguous lots of the lots across the street as part of that exception to the rule that it has to, if it's in common ownership, you have to know that you wouldn't be able to combine them. However, then that controls the density of, of a lot of lakefront neighborhoods. Because there are these situations, last time Michael Betcher showed you a number of them. And so then you, it's unknown how many you would increase it by. So we gave you language that shows that and that took out one diagram. You'd have the other amendment, which is on page 18 of your packet, which shows it with keeping the non-contiguous lots and keeping the two diagrams that we had brought to you last time. Um, and if you feel that those non-contiguous slots, you don't want to change that scenario, you still want that in there. I feel like these diagrams and then the way that we have restructured the numbering or the lettering in that section helps someone who's new to come to see exactly what the circumstances are in the logic tree. So the question back to you two that we highlighted in our memo is which version of the amendments is preferable? To think about what the unintended consequences of those amendments are? And is there a version that's ready for a public hearing?
If I can comment perhaps slightly differently than the way I commented in our last meeting. And I apologize for that because you just mentioned something that hadn't occurred to me before, density. I had been really thinking about this and to reiterate my previous comments, I was very concerned about having non-contig, one of them, non-contiguous lots on opposite sides of the road be allowed to factor that land into the calculations for what can happen on each side. And that's really what I was thinking about more so, especially with area and lot coverage calculations. But the concept of density and still wanting to allow development of that land, I hadn't looked at it from that perspective. So what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind right now, and so thank you for raising that. What I'm trying to reconcile in my mind then is between these two versions that are here is my original concern about lot coverage and the concept of people maybe buying land across the street to use it as an offset for the area that they have on, let's say, the lakeside, presuming that's where the residents would be. Is that addressed? And in my mind, I haven't come to an answer, so maybe I should put that to you. Am I making that up or is that actually a conceivable issue? That someone could try to use the land on the other side to offset what they're allowed to cover on the, let's call it lakeside, since that's where these things happen, so that they could build a larger structure on the lakeside under coverage?
That theoretically could happen. However, it's been my experience working here and in other lakefront communities that usually the land across the street is not that attractive in people unless you really advertise that this is part of it, would not immediately think, oh, I can buy that and offset and then get a higher, a bigger structure than I could before. Also, still, the setbacks would still apply. Um, and then the height would still apply. So those two rules, I feel like would, tho- those two rules and the way that your water body yard works, that preserves, that, that constrains some of the bulk. Um, but absolutely, is there a scenario where somebody could get a bit more or a bit more, probably a, a bit more building out? Um, that they would be able to completely fill their building envelope? Whereas if they didn't have the parcel across the street, they wouldn't have been able to it because of lot coverage. So the flip side, though, of this non-contiguous lot is in your scenario, someone has a, has a house, like a cottage, and they want to redevelop it. And they realize if they buy across the street, they could build a much bigger structure, right? Then that across the street isn't ever developed as a house. And that then constrains the overall density, less impact on roads, less impact on sewers. Because for every lot, you could have an additional set sewer tap. And then for every lot, you can estimate that there's probably two cars at least coming and going plus, you know, mail, trash, all of that. Um, so that's the factors I would say to put in your mind is, are you looking to? I think it's, I think the, the scenario that you put forward, Planning Commissioner Smith, I think that would be the rare occurrence. However, it is more of the occurrence that people want to develop on the lake. Um, and then this scenario where it's the zoning lot, whether all the lots are non-conforming and you have to use your side, the lot that's essentially your side lot or across the street lot as part of it, that constrains that density and the overall number of residences in those lakefront neighborhoods. Or even on Fletcher, you were saying today, you had somebody who was coming in, who this applied to them with Huron River frontage.
Yeah, I, I would ask a little different version of that question, I think more what you were just getting to. I'm, I, I would have no knowledge, I guess, of somebody that is buying that otherwise vacant lot and trying to combine it. But I have seen situations, I guess that mainly would have been issues that have come to ZBA where somebody wants to do something with their house. And, and they're, they probably already have the constraints about setbacks and all of that. But they are going to increase the lot coverage or they would like to. And I think maybe the evolution of some of these lots around the lakes is, okay, somebody bought that piece of property, you're going to put a road through it. They already own on both sides of it. So depending on which one of these we would choose, well, let's, if, if we're going to consider that it's separated by a road, it's not contiguous, that isn't part of the calculation anymore, I presume, which would, depending on how you look at it, at, you know, when it gets to an appeals process, they would be either more non-conforming because
Yeah.
They've got that, they can include that. That doesn't necessarily mean it changes the outcome because just the variance is going to be bigger. But it does make me question, I think Megan, you touched on it. Okay, so this doesn't count for anything. It's not going to be a billable lot if somebody tries to sell it. I guess hypothetically, you could combine it, you know, with somebody whose side yard might, might abut it, but what is the future of, of that property, which now at least is included in the lot coverage percentage? But going forward, perhaps would not be.
Mm hmm. And because you, due to the attorney's, um, guidance, we need to take out soul. You cannot necessarily always depend on that lot across the street. Somebody could decide to sell it since there are scenarios where.
Even if they couldn't build on it, they. Even if they couldn't build on it, they may still sell it.
Right.
Yeah.
And then what the ordinance says is any lot that was created before it was, before the ordinance was adopted, they can, you can put a structure on it as long as it meets the zoning requirements. So it might be a smaller house, but that's another house.
Well, Mr. Chair, I recall back in my previous experience on the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, this issue coming up, I won't say frequently, but it, it'd come up occasionally, uh, primarily for, uh, lots in the area of Winston Drive out on the north side of Fortage. And the discussions at that time basically uh, resolved into what is the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law? And the spirit of the law would suggest that using a non-contiguous property to increase the, uh, uh, zoning violation or the zoning requirement of what you want to build on was not in keeping with what the purpose of the zoning ordinance was, and therefore, to the best of my recollection, most of them were denied for that reason. But along those lines and with what our planning consultant said, how about if, because it's grandfathers effectively, and they can get, you know, some reasonable setbacks, that, that otherwise contiguous lot may be separated by a road with what we're dealing with tonight, um, could become buildable? Would, would the intent or the spirit, let's say, of the zoning ordinance prefer that the footprint of an existing house could be expanded versus that stays the same and another dwelling unit could be created? Are those, are those in conflict or not necessarily?
To me, the operating way, there would be the relative areas of the two lots.
Okay.
And if the lot that we wanted to use as the, giving us enough area to expand or increase the bulk of the house on the lakeside of the property, if, if that is not sufficient, or i- if that's sufficient to let me increase the size of the house, but it's not large enough to allow me to build on it, uh, then it would, to me, it becomes, uh, back to the, what is the spirit of what we're trying to do? Because it is by recollection that most of the lots that were in question, the so-called back lot was never large enough that it would support a structure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Along those lines is the back lot, and just looking at these diagrams, an accessory structure, a garage, which if they're non-contiguous, sorry, non-conforming, but contiguous across a right of way, and especially if the back lot were the non-conforming, if we were to keep this language, does that now allow development? Again, building a garage back there, since it's not primary structure, it wouldn't have been allowed if it was-
Yeah, that is an interesting question. I don't think we, we allow uh, something like a garage, a barn to be the primary structure. You have to have-
Right. So that's why when you treat the non-contiguous lots as a zoning lot, that somebody could have a detached accessory structure on what we're calling the back lot. And that's a, that's a scenario that you often have.
And in that scenario, because we can't restrict the sale, that back lot could then be sold. So that's, someone else now has a property-
This neighbor now has two garages, that doesn't have any garage anymore. Yeah, that's, that's also interesting that w- we inadvertently encourage something like that. Well, forget the encourage part, somebody will eventually figure that, oh, this seems to be kind of a, you know, what you might call a loophole, that it allows me to do that. Yeah, I can sell my garage to the neighbor or somebody that isn't even in the neighborhood at all. But not going to build a house there maybe, but my garage is worth something, somebody wants to come store a boat there, you know, their, uh, classic car over the winter or something.
I think those are all very viable potential uses for that property and uh, Mr. Smith also, I think, raised another very viable possibility. If the person that owns the adjacent property to what we're calling this back lot chooses to purchase that and get a lot big enough that he or she can actually build a, a home on, our zoning ordinance would allow it.
You know, the, I think the element that differentiates this, that maybe I don't understand, this language that we have current allows this concept of considering a non-conforming lot conforming by being contiguous under the same ownership, but we haven't necessarily required that the lots be combined. And wasn't the comment that the tax assessor was making about combining lots? You can only combine them if the metson, whatever the term is, meets, so that they physically are intact. That if the lots are combined, that effectively means we don't have to worry about that sale concept. Same too with the opposite-
Mr. Chair.
Way. If it's a private road where we say they join in the middle, you effectively are owning boundary to boundary with a right, with a right of way through the middle. And in that scenario, it seems fine to allow someone to put a garage because they can't break it off if they were combined. Well, they can't combine them. No, they can't combine them. But if there's a public road in between and they can't be combined, seems to me that's the scenario that we wouldn't want to allow these two opposite things. So maybe their answer lies in only if they're combined.
Oh, Mr. Chair, may I speak? Per, uh, section sixteen point eleven B, uh, in the township zoning ordinance, for adjacent properties, residential accessory building shall only be permitted on a lot contiguous or adjacent and under the same ownership and control on which a principal dwelling unit exists or is under construction. So I would say that this ordinance covers that concern that if a detached garage were to be sold, um, somebody couldn't, outside of the neighborhood, can just use that garage, um, to store their canoes, boats, bikes, uh, et cetera, has to be under the same ownership. So the ru- removal of sale, um, in this proposed amendment, um, shouldn't bring up that concern.
Also, going back to that, on sixteen eleven, what it says for adjacent residential accessory buildings, it has three bullets underneath that, and it says severability, the lot with the principal building and the lot with the accessory building shall remain under single ownership. Recording, a declaration that the lot shall remain under single ownership and control following approval by the township, shall be recorded with the registered deeds at the property owner's expense with a copy to be provided to the township before a zoning permit shall be issued for the accessory building. And then three, transfer. The lot with the accessory building may be transferred to another lot that meets the standards of this section if the transfer does not create a non-conformity for the developmental standards of this ordinance. So we could look to make sure that if an accessory structure is placed on the back lot, if we were to be saying that this applies to them in terms of the adjacent, and then they have to fulfill all of those things. Because while we can't combine them, they could be required to put that recorded declaration on, and then that prevents what y- you have been talking about in terms of what could happen to that detached accessory building, whether someone uses it as a, 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 a dwelling unit or somebody would rent it out as, you know, commercial storage, things like that.
So that all makes sense to me if somebody comes in and wants a permit to do whatever it is we just talked about. But if it's pre-existing, what is the township's enforcement mechanism in that case? What, what keeps somebody with a layout like we've been describing from, yeah, selling that garage across the way as opposed to, they want to put a garage across the way and they're going to come in, get a permit, you're going to be able to review it, point out section-
So it's really if anybody pulls a permit in any way, um, so they would make improvements to it. Um, or if they tried to, if they tried to switch it, let's say, to a dwelling unit, um, then they would need to pull a permit and then that has to go through the township to get a zoning permit first. So I, and then as things go forward, you would, the zoning, the plant, the director of planning and zoning or their, um, whoever, whoever they've assigned tasks to, then would go through and make sure that these things happen before the zoning permit was issued. And if somebody was using it as a commercial storage and we got a complaint, that's not allowed, it's not an allowed use. So it would, it, that violates the ordinance.
But if somebody had the house on the lakeside, garage across the road, and they sell the garage, and it's not commercial, okay, I just want a place to park my old car, township wouldn't have any way to be aware of that, I guess, until sometime well after the fact.
Uh, question for, uh, Megan. Doesn't this, as we're describing the scenario now, uh, does that rather contradict the opinion of the township attorney? In that the lot, we can't prevent the sale, but if the property is sold, then it would possibly make the parent lot non-conforming?
Yes. We can't prevent the sale, then it could make the parent lot non-conforming because the parent lot was non-conforming to begin with and the the other one brought it in.
The accessory lot allowed it to be conforming.
But-
Yeah.
And I would say in terms of striking the soul, that is, and the way it was explained to me and, and what was in, I believe, the communication you got was that that's a basic property rights bundle. It is, that is something that you need to change, taking out soul.
However, if somebody wants to get a new permit and do what's described in sixteen eleven B, let's say-
Place an accessory structure on it.
Yeah, that is a legitimate restriction that the township can place on it. And from here to forevermore, you can't divide, you can't sell, you can't whatever. But yeah, I think that it, it does seem to be in conflict. And to me, the whole thing, to an extent at least, the, the whole thing kind of turns on, everything that we do fresh has an opportunity to be cleaner. The problems that we have, the ones that get addressed at ZBA or staff has to struggle with, how, how can we, how should we go forward on something? Yeah, it's all the pre-existing stuff that I have a little bit of concern that, depending on which route we take here, we kind of the devil we know versus the devil we don't know. In the one case, same wording that we've always had for the most part, but we're trying to clarify some things versus-
And it says adjacent, and so I had looked at it also as, um, so the term, the definition of adjacent, adjacent or adjoining means touching contiguous, sharing a common lot line or located across the street or alley.
Well, that seems to maybe complicated even more.
Well, so-
We just-
So that's what I said, that's what I'm saying is that the, the, already in the ordinance for an accessory unit, this applies that they need to do that restriction.
Right. But there are undoubtedly a whole bunch of them that haven't ever done that because they've never had to come to the township.
Right.
Let me strike that. They've never come to the township, whether they've needed to or not. Kind of beside the point right now. They have not come to the township, therefore, there hasn't been the opportunity to direct them to do this. I, I guess we're not going to solve everything. It's not going to be perfect, no matter what we do. I think we need some guidance on what is the least amount of damage that we can do. We're, we're going to maybe fix something, but does there, does there also present an opportunity that we, you know, created an issue that maybe didn't need to be created?
I would say to do the least amount of damage or change is, the least amount of change is to have the second option to page eighteen of the packet, have that go forward where you're keeping the, the lots across the street. As part of the regulations.
That makes sense to me. And, and in that case, mostly what's been done here is, is clarify kind of like the logic tree, that if this will then go to that paragraph, but you have to have two of these, three or five or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, the least amount of change, least unintended consequences.
Yes.
Yeah, and as one who raised that and asked for it last time around, I feel the same, that the least unintended consequences come from the second example that you've provided where we are striking soul and cleaning up.
Mm-hmm.
And it's doing some cleanup. Then if we want to look at it in the bigger picture, that's a separate issue about how we're effectively dealing with density, because I think that's the fundamental concept in here is density. Do we want to allow density in these areas or not?
So would it be your direction for a public hearing to be on your agenda for your next meeting? For this, and then you could take action on the version with, that includes the non-contiguous lots?
Well, I think certainly at a future meeting, can we hold off whether it's the next meeting until we get toward the end of the meeting and is we have gotten jammed up inadvertently, I guess, and, and some of it is just somebody, uh, asking me, hey, you think we can do these on the agenda? Oh, yeah, sure. That's no problem. Without realizing that, oh, there's something big coming at us like the, I don't think it's coming at our next meeting, but from reading the in the loop, sounds like short-term rentals will come. When are we, March, April, in May? Uh, or go to the, go to the board, maybe in May, and then after that, they may want to kick something to the planning commission if there's a change to be made. So probably next meeting is okay.
Right. By the end of April, we're hoping to have some type of recommendation forwarded. I highly doubt there'll be a language drafted at that time that's ready to come for anyone as the ordinance change, but there will be a recommendation, and then it will have to go from there.
All right. Thank you. So that pretty much, I think, answers the question of, uh, yeah, we could take this up in the next meeting. Anybody have a different opinion of that?
No, I appreciate the, the discussion that you had, that it is all about the unintended consequences and not knowing what they are. So I appreciate that discussion, listening to it.
And, and just to that point, some of the things that we do, and I'll, I'll get into that more in the next item because the keeping of animals has been a big deal to me, rightly or wrongly, I've gotten into, you know, some tiny little details on that, it seems. I'll, I'll give that speech now, that, so if it's not perfect, if it turns out that we've overly restricted the keeping of rabbits, which I've never had a rabbit in my life, but that one just kind of stuck with me that, what do you mean, four rabbits is the equivalent of, of a water buffalo or something like that, it just doesn't. If we don't get it right, there's opportunity to take it up again, fix it, tweak it, whatever. I think it's a little different situation if we, if we change something around the lake. I think it's a little different situation if we, if we change something around the lakes. It's kind of hard to unring that bell because if somebody acts on it. We're kind of, it's not, it's not, oh yeah, you, don't worry about four, four bunnies, you can have six. Or three water buffaloes is one too many. We're going to create some real, real estate issues if, if the unintended consequences get away from us, so. Yeah, I think it would be, it would be good to, um, move slowly and cautiously on this one. Now, since this is not in our, um, action items, I think we can just have consensus of the planning commission. If we would like to move this on to the future meeting and then I guess staff can determine whether next meeting is the appropriate time for that. So that would be my recommendation anyhow, we just. You've heard this, you can make sense out of, out of this, uh, for an actionable item at, uh. The future meeting that you determine appropriate. Any, uh, opposing point of view? All right, let's, let's do that. And, um, I've misplaced my agenda, but I think the next discussion item is. Keeping of animals. Rapid discussion, the, uh. And, and just kind of, you know, re, uh, restate what I think the issue is with this. I've. I've been kind of concerned about this one, maybe needlessly, because I don't think we get a lot of complaints about. I, I know there have been some, you know, somebody keeping big animals and, and, uh, it wasn't appropriate for them to do that. I don't think we've had any complaints about somebody has too many bunnies. But to me, the intent of, of this section, why it needs to be changed is to better allow. Agricultural activities that preserve and promote the rural nature of Dexter Township. Which has been told to us by our constituency, uh, through the master plan process. It is one of the pillars that the township board has established, so I think we, we help. Support the, the goals of the township board and the residents of the township. And I thought that, um, overall, what we have in the existing ordinance could lead to. Overregulation of keeping with animals. But we've gone through this a couple of times and I think the proposal before us. Where I was concerned about inconsistencies in the last one, animal equivalencies and that, I think, I think what's before us tonight. Has gone a long way toward, uh, resolving that. And like I said a minute ago, if it's not perfect, we can. We can make those corrections if needed, as needed. Out into the future, so I don't have any, uh. I don't have any further concerns, I guess. Without, you know, really getting into some. Ridiculous amounts of details, I think this is a, a good step in the right direction, I, I think, uh. Two things probably, treating animals by pounds, I think gets us a little bit better than animal units. And that it allows the DPC, the Director of Planning and Zoning, I think it says in here someplace. To make, to make that call, not everything has to automatically go to.
Right.
ZBA, not everything has to come to, oh my gosh, um. Planning Commission better take it up again, so I. I think it's workable and, and having said all of that. Yeah, I will admit that most of my concerns are, uh, I, I guess historically groundless, because. Aside from obvious problems where somebody kept a critter where they shouldn't have had a critter, I, I don't think we've had concerns about. Rabbits, goats, chickens. That I'm aware of.
We really made three changes, that provision for the director of planning and zoning, that they can make a judgment call. On where it fits in that table, um. To previous concerns that you have a lot of animals living together and they can be happy and what's that maximum? Um, it, allowing the lot area, taking out that provision. That restricts like you can't reuse a lot area and then, but having a maximum of that a thousand pounds of live animal. Weight per acre, I recognize that that's going to put a burden on who's ever doing enforcement if it comes to that. Um, but, um, that's the, that's how the definition of an animal unit, but. And then also I, I saw it used in Webster Township's new, they've updated theirs. Um, and then we added in on the dwarf species, um, and just put. That it weighs less than five hundred pounds on average as adults. Um, so that you have some provisions and so that, again, it mostly is going to fall on your director of planning and zoning. To find out what dwarf cattle are at adults on average, but there's resources out there.
And Fletcher, before you get concerned about how am I going to make a cow stand on four bathroom scales? At least when I was a kid raising cattle, there's a, a tape measure type thing that you, you know, kind of. Measure their circumference and your read-off, depending on, I think, what the breed was, how many pounds that approximately is, but you'll get close enough.
And again, this is for people who are keeping animals for their own pleasure, it is not for anybody who is farming. On any.
Any commercial, any, any definition of commercial, doesn't matter what zoning district it's in. Or at least not RR or, or Ag.
Falls under.
That falls. Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a comment just on the chart, one of your changes. Um, overall, I really like it, you know, it's a lot of positive changes. Um, on the chart where you had just mentioned the dwarf species weighing less than five hundred pounds on average as adults. When you say or dwarf, dwarf species, are you referring to cattle here or anything above or anything, anything?
I refer to anything and I'm going to fully admit I might be wrong and that five hundred pounds might be wrong. Um, okay, because. Yeah.
Cause I, I think based on some of the text just description, it was meant to be towards. That what's called mini or micro cattle.
Mm-hmm.
And the mini or micro cattle on average weigh five hundred to eight hundred pounds, you'll, you'll never get. Uh, a dwarf, I don't know if that's the right term, because there really are, they're mini and then the next one down is micro. And even the micro are around five hundred and the mini are up to eight hundred, so. If the intent was to allow the micro and mini cattle.
That's the intent.
It wouldn't fit that category.
So then.
And then the dwarf, everything else such as like a, a mini horse, a mini donkey, they're not called dwarf, but they're called minis. You know, that would fit under here, but that's already in the category of horses and. Mules and donkeys anyway, so that's my only question is, and, and whether or not. This commission wanted to encourage cattle. Even if they were smaller, you know, outside, uh, in, uh, on a parcel that's less than ten acres. I mean, it, do we even want to?
I think my previous comments on that, I was thinking along the lines of, and. I don't want to pretend like I know anything about this, but I'm just aware, let's say, that there are some people who want raw milk. And short of making a cooperative because of, of, uh. State and other laws. They may want a critter, you know, some number of goats or a cow, just so they can get, you know, raw unpasteurized milk for whatever reason. Uh, I don't know how, you know, how legit my thoughts were about that, but that's mainly what I pictured. If somebody wants to have, you know, five acres and a cow, it would be for that. They could have five acres and a cow and they want to, you know, they want to raise their own meat also.
Right, so I'm, I'm okay.
Something is more of a.
The door for the mini or micro cattle being a part of that new language. But if you don't mention the word cattle, cattle, alt cattle is going to fall over the ten acres or more. I, I think you'd have to like, so say the, and it's, and they're not going to be less than five hundred pounds.
So, um, planning commissioner heard, would you suggest that it be that? Particular robe, be changed to horse, ponies, mules, burrows, ostriches, reindeer or dwarf cattle? And just leave it at that?
I would probably, yes.
Okay. Absolutely do that. And then we're, are you taking out the less than five hundred pounds on average as adults?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I guess, uh, I could ask one more question, I could have just Googled this and. Save the embarrassment of asking it in a public meeting, the, uh, the column at the far right notes. Page four, chickens, turkey, blah, blah. Uh, yeah, I'm somewhat familiar with roosters, what's the, uh, must be some objection with peacocks though?
They're very loud.
I didn't realize that. Okay, now I get it, thank you. All right, anybody, uh, have any further discussion questions, modifications? If not, is, uh, everybody okay with? Referring this back to staff to. Put on a future meeting. As they see fit. I hear no objection, so by the power vested in me by you guys, how about we just do that? And that's the end of our discussion items, it brings us to the approval of the minutes of our February twenty fifth. Meeting, which we have been provided. And.
I have one, one small typo.
Okay.
Um, in the, in the Township Board of Trustees update, it says allocated money for competition, it's completion.
Oh, yeah.
But that's it, that's the only one I saw.
Anybody else have anything?
Just fifteen adjournment, uh, there's.
Supported by meeting.
For the, yeah, for the support.
You know, I'm surprised that I did not catch that, thank you. We know who, uh, oh, you know what, my giving a moment. I may have written that down. Yes, what I had was the German was moved by her and supported by Barry. Pardon me? Okay, yeah, I mean that. That's better than going back through the tapes and trying to figure it out, I guess, that's why I have written down. All right, anybody have any other, uh, modifications? If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, amended?
Second.
Moved by Smith, supported by Abbott. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Propose no, motion carried. Correspondence. Anything for us?
No correspondence received.
Township Board trustees.
Oh. So at our last meeting, we, um, agreed to enter into a new road improvement contract with Washtenaw County Road Commission. We amended the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget and we adapted the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, uh, one question, because, uh, because you pointed it out in the minutes a moment ago. I, I recall being at the meeting. That allocated the money for the completion of broadband, you know, that, that little like pocket that wasn't getting it. With that, does that mean that Dexter Township is now, is now a hundred percent?
Yeah, and it, and I think that we're the first township in Washtenaw County to be a hundred percent connected to broadband.
Wow.
So that's. We're not. Linden?
Oh, wait.
Darn it.
Yeah, that's right, Linden, but that was, that was under a whole different, yeah, deal, they, uh.
Right, okay, but we will, um, but yeah, that will complete the entire township.
Oh, very nice.
And that was a, that area was a dark area, I mean.
How frustrating that would be.
I couldn't, yeah, especially in twenty twenty when, like, they can't. Get, they can't even get, they have to have satellite TV because they can't even get cable TV, yeah, I was, uh. Yeah, well, if you want to live off the grid, grid, that's a perfect spot.
Well, thank you and congratulations to the Township Board for, uh, getting us all connected. Concerns of planning commission members, director of planning and zoning, township supervisor and reporting secretary, let's start over at that side. Megan, anything for us?
No, I am just, um, excited for Fletcher to be on board, I think he's going to be great and here for a long time.
Excellent, thank you, Fletcher.
I'm excited to work with all of you and, uh, glad I got to meet which one of you tonight.
Thank you, Alicia.
I'm good, I have no concerns.
Steve.
Yes, uh. I received a flyer from, uh, Michigan Townships Association, uh, they are holding three workshops. Uh, places that would be really tough to take, Frank and Moog Gaylor and Kalamazoo for. Uh, members of, uh, planning, planning commissions, zoning board of, zoning boards of appeal. Gain a better understanding of township planning and zoning. Uh, I would propose that this information. If approved by the chair, be given to our township board representative. Who she can take it to the township board and get authorization for any of the planning commissioners that. Went through, uh, Michigan State's, uh. Planning zoning program back in the dark ages to allow us to, uh, attend one of these, uh, training sessions. They will be essentially three hours of training and one hour registration check-in and dinner at the. Uh, relative areas, I'd be glad to share this brochure and. Uh, the rate will be for each person in attendance, one, one hundred dollars. Uh, for the, uh, members of the Michigan, of the MTA, Michigan Townships Association. And they also have a packet of books, which I think as. The township, we would only need to purchase one packet and those are a hundred and fourteen seventy-five for a packet of three books. So. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, ask that you ask for a vote by the township, uh. Planning commission members as to whether or not we submit this on up the chain to get approval to attend these.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a good idea, just kind of a, a question of, of process, uh, there should be money and.
There is continuing. Yeah, there's continuing education money and, um, I believe this falls under it, so I would be happy to reach out to Lonnie tomorrow. And, uh, find out how we move this forward, I don't think this, this isn't something that requires. I do not believe this requires to go to official board of trustee, this is just continuing education and with the volume of work that this planning commission. Is going to undertake over the next year, maybe two years. It, it's a good idea that the more education you can get, better, better you serve the residents.
Yep, that sounds good, are you, quite any further action from that trustee Abbott can get us the answer and?
Have one of your brochures, what I'll do is I'll make sure to, uh. Get that, get that to our supervisor.
Excellent.
And, and our office.
Before you go, let me just take a picture, so I've got the, we'll, we'll deal with that after the meeting, then I'll, uh, have the dates down so I can check it out.
And one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up is it is perfectly time sensitive, the first, uh. Session in Frankenmoos is the seventh of May and we have to have a registration done three weeks prior to the event date. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, anything?
Um no. Nothing to add.
Sandra?
No.
Janice, aside from, we're getting out of here and it's still daylight, which must just completely overjoy you. Anything for us? And uh, thank you again for another month of uh good and dedicated uh support of us. We appreciate that. I think we've hit everybody. Uh, second uh call for public comment. Seeing no takers? Future agenda items? I wanted to maybe discuss that earlier, but I think we've we've dealt with that. So
Just to clarify, both of the zoning ordinance amendments we've talked about tonight would go forward in April, have public hearings and be action items.
Sounds good to me. And I don't, I don't remember if there was anything else hanging out there.
No, I don't think so. The the other um thing I guess we should have shared was that uh Consumers um has submitted Consumers Energy can uh submitted a revised site plan that met the conditions of their administrative approval. We're waiting on some
We're, we're waiting on them to submit physical copies of the plans and a zoning permit. Uh, so that permit can be issued and then the staff work order can be lifted as well.
Great, thank you. If there's no further business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Birch. Anybody?
Smart.
Bueller. Bueller. Moved by Birch, support by Heard. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I detected that maybe there was some hesitancy in uh in adjourning the meeting this early. Nobody wanted to support that.
National
Yes.
That doesn't dictate where a fire alarm is armed, required to be installed, just those are what kind of wiring and what type of devices you